Good evening all, welcome to the August 22nd, 2023. Oh there, you're still up? Oh yes. Start over here again. Welcome to the August 22nd, 2023 Business Meeting of the Board of Education. I need a motion to full this meeting to order. I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Move forward. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, anybody who's familiar or not flying the emergency access or to the rear view, to the rear bus, don't go in the door. Could be stuck. Normally we do the pledge of allegiance, but we're waiting on a couple of Boy Scouts. Not, I'm sorry. That's right. We'll do it again at the show. I need a motion for the approval of War of Agenda meetings.
Motion?
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Need approval in minutes.
Be resolved at the Board of Education except minutes of the business meeting held on July 11th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is this a single? What is this?
This is for you.
What's that?
For the three organizations. Be resolved at the Board of Education in six minutes of the pre-organization meeting held July 11th, 2023.
Okay, and I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Proper comments. Speakers will we be recognized, wish to address the board on agenda items only if the committee is here for us, so we move on. Alright, we're gonna start with our presentation and reports, and we will start with the Mr. Clemens.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Welcome to Hampton Bays. Excited each of the buildings will introduce new faculty and staff members today. Next week, we have new teacher orientation. We started the teacher orientation at Hampton Bays with a ride on yellow school bus. We believe it's important that as leaders and educational leaders in the community, when we're talking in our school district, when we talk to our kid and we hear that they were at skate park this weekend, or that they worked at Cowfish, or that they go down to the bowl, that we know that part about them, and that we can wage with them on that level to build a strong relationship with our kids. And so, we have a two-day orientation program that is both getting ready for the year with nuts and bolts, but then also onboarding to the core values and the culture of the Hampton Bay School District. So, welcome, and we'll meet you all. I know you, but you'll meet everybody just in a few moments. Enrollment is a fluid number. As I say each year, that number really becomes firm in October. The first Wednesday of October is that snapshot called Bedstay. Kindergarten through 12th grade enrollment today stands at 1,962 students. But with 10 days left to go, that's like in dog years, that's like six months in the register office. And so, there are lots of packets that are being given out. We do expect that number to grow, and it is not out of the realm of what we were predicting. Maybe a couple more in a particular grade, a kid or two less in another grade. But kindergarten stands at 119 right now, and we were projecting closer 130 there. So, we do expect some little ones to come through the door, and then others who, you know, you get to the end of the month, end of the summer out here, and these agreements are signed for seasonal rentals, for winter rentals. And so, we'll see where that number goes, but the way budget is built and the way the master schedule is done in all three buildings, we're in a position to support all the kids with what they need. Spring, fall sports began this morning. So, Mr. Foster was up and at them with our JV and varsity teams. They'll practice this weekend next. You might have read in the newspaper about Section 11 negotiating with officials. They're voting. One of the votes is tonight. So, it will be tight to get those first, particularly non-league competitions in next week, and that's a count of what. That's counting what matters. So, our officials are, there are thousands of contests that you can imagine from middle school JV and varsity across all of Suffolk County, and so it's a major undertaking. But Section 11 and both, and both Section 11 and the officials association understand the pressure and the desire up to a conclusion so that we can get competition started for kids. But it's largely without, out of our control. In the meantime, we'll practice, and we'll be ready when we're ready to have the season begin. Larry's gonna share a construction update with you during his report. As you can see, there are dirtier places and there are inner places in the district. That's about all I'm gonna say on that. In your packet, members, we've had some community, that's a community and parent interest in talking about the concept of a boys' volley, boys' varsity volleyball program, something we don't have in Hampton Bays and not all school districts have in Suffolk County. And so, there's some information in your packet. Where that conversation will begin is in the Board of Athletics and Curriculum Subcommittee. So, this would be a potential outcome of starting a boys' volleyball program would be that it couldn't happen until fall of 2024 for all of Section 11 scheduling and planning needs to take place, and the budgeting for what a cost to run a varsity, potentially a JV and a mid-school program, and what implications that has for our existing athletic programs. Smaller school enrollments declining. We're always looking for new opportunities for kids, and if that will bring more kids out, then that's a good thing. If it will pull from other teams, that might not be a good thing, but these are all the conversation pieces that we need to have. So, we'll engage the parents who have shown some really positive and enthusiastic interest, and Mr. Foster will take us through that conversation initiative. Tomorrow, Mr. Ferraro and Mrs. Fox have a meeting with our potential partners, Teachers' Federal Credit Union, to take the next step in our financial literacy initiative. If you walk out the door here on your way out, you'll see an old school store that is taking steps each day to become a student-run bank in partnership with a financial institution where kids and staff members would be able to transact in a secure situation, in a secure environment, to be able to transact here in school, and that would be coupled with a financial literacy plan and curriculum, teaching kids how to budget, how to manage money. These would be custodial accounts if the dial was under 18, and so that, we anticipate it would be probably a 2024 opening, January 2024, if all the pieces fall into place quickly. But we'll continue to report on that each month. And then, finally, before I turn it over to the buildings, we will begin, we are in the process of shifting our communications platform from School Messenger, Android, and up-end texting and email to a program called Parent Square. It's an e-squad. It's called Hainish here. We did talk about this during the budget process. We've been planning for this for a number of months. Members of the tech team here, Mr. Ferraro has been working on this four months with them to onboard the district and get that platform built out. And starting tomorrow, we'll have over the next couple of days, 50 faculty members in addition to staff members, and administrators have been trained so that we can roll this out. It's a user-friendly tool for both us as the content providers and also for parents who can take advantage of functionality like language, changing the language of Parent Square, so that it's in their, it's in their preferred and comfortable language, and also how frequently you get the messages. You can get them in real time. A teacher pushing out here, look at this art barb that our class is working on. You can get it in real time as a text message or as a daily digest at 3:30 in the afternoon, and it's a summary of all the things that you've been engaged, all the ways you've been engaged as a parent. So, all of this is in the theme of building the homeschool partnership to support kids and their success at school. So, we'll roll that out. Mr. Ferraro has planned, scheduled to communicate with families tomorrow, and so as parents log into their parent portal accounts to verify their information, it's no longer the blue artboard card that, whose, you know, grandma is on the emergency card. Parents log in and they can enter and change that information in a secure way, and that will be tied into here for all of Parent Square information. So, a lot of unseen work that has gone on here, and we'll roll that out in support. It may not be without hiccups in the first few weeks, but for opening a school may not be without hiccups. We try to be as hiccupless as possible in Hampton Bays, but, and then we respond and we communicate with our families and our kids to get over any humps in the new programs we're running now. New friends, new faculty members, new leaders. Let me start with Mr. Shug at the middle school and the new middle school team that's gonna be joining us this year.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Hello, buddy.
It was a really great hiring season for us, beginning in the, we spring and early summer, and even about two weeks ago. And as a result, we wound up with great, four great new faculty members will be joining us, and I'd like to introduce some of them this evening, beginning with Melissa Davies. Melissa Davies here is going to be, it's interesting her story because she interviewed with us for a slightly different position, and all of a sudden, we had an availability in the area of MTSS where she'll be working as interventionist, and we realized that she was the perfect person for the job. So, welcome to you, Melissa, same at the base. To my immediate right here, we have Maureen Farrell. Maureen Farrell is going to be teaching seventh and eighth grade math with us. We're really excited about that. She's a real dynamo in terms of her content delivery and meeting kids where they are, and it's all that throughout her process, including in the demo lesson. And we'd like to also, oh, there she is. So, Narcie, now Nora, she may be a familiar face because she was a former middle school student, high school student, and she's back at Hampton Bay's middle school. We're really excited to have Narcie join us again, and she's going to be teaching one of the binding world classes, in fifth and only go to sixth grade, and we're super excited to have Narcie rejoin us. Massively, we have Kira Seho, who's going to be joining us as a lead replacement, full year replacement for Rachel Boras. So, really super excited. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, morning, everybody. Okay, that's been a year for you. We have a couple of new faculty members. Mr. Meyer is not here today, so I'm gonna be speaking for him on his behalf. He is rocking his son up at the University of Canada. So, exciting days for Mr. Meyer and his family. We have three new faculty members, two of which I've worked with before, Rebecca Hunter, I'm sorry, Rebecca Belize. She is gonna be working with Mrs. Urizzo in first grade, and Mrs. Allison second grade for special education, and then Alexander Hunter, who both did lead replacements with us this year, did a wonderful job. She's gonna be in kindergarten, special education as well. You will be with Ms. McKenna, and you'll be, Marquez for sure, not McKenna.
Warlock.
We moved you to Warlock.
Miss Warlock.
Alright. So, we're one for one on that one. And I have the pleasure of meeting our social worker who I've not met before. I was not involved in that. Daniella Gange, is that who we said?
Gange.
Gange, yes. Okay, very nice to meet you. Like I said, I did not have the pleasure of meeting her with that interview. She comes to us very highly recommended, and she'll be shared between both middle school and the elementary school. So, we'll be forward to some good things with that. And like I said, all our candidates were super excited about them. They've done a great job at the elementary school and looking forward to a great start to the school year. Did I forget anybody else? I do have some too. Not a new teacher, but a position comes to us. This is Paige. She came to us the other day, and she was looking for a spot, and she wanted to join a team, so she's a Penn State grad. Mr. Shug, I know you like that. Penn State grad, so she's gonna start with us. She's gonna probably work, Mrs. Notes, working to get her certification over to New York State from Penn State, and welcome to the team. I think I got her.
Mr. Chump, I'm in Houston. So, we're welcoming three new faculty members to the team at the high school this year. Let's start with Katie McCoy. Katie is going to be one of our new load teachers, teaching Spanish II and Spanish III this year, a recent grad from Onianta. Actually, we got her before she graduated. She started with a TA position here, did an incredible job, finished up the year working with Michelle Edwards, and we're really excited about the contribution she's gonna make to the building. Also another face, someone who we're not letting leave, Leo Gonzalez, who started her students teaching with Mrs. Heilman, and again, did a tremendous job here working with our ENL students. So, before he had a chance to interview him anyplace else, we scooped her up, and she's joining that department. We're expecting great things from her. And the newest face to the crew is Amanda Triforos, and she is a both a social studies and special education teacher. Went through a rigorous process of interviewing with Ms. Carlson, myself. Diane was with us before her demo lesson, taught a really diverse lesson that really differentiated well for all different types of learners and really impressed us. So, we're looking forward to both of those apartments having some great experiences and some new blood. So, welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
And right there, front and center, which is also the front and center of each of our buildings, is the nurses' office, and we welcome Bettina Van Vlade, who will be replacing Nurse Jenkins when she retires in just a few hours. September 5th is her last day, and Bettina comes to us from a district up the island, and we are, we're as grateful for her coming to Hampton Bays as she is to change her commute, right, to Hampton Bays, and comes to us with great experience in both the school setting and also the paramedic emergency response setting. So, we know that the nurses' office is everything from ICE and BOBOs to significant crisis response, and so we're looking forward to having you join the team as well. Bettina will serve all three, be based in the elementary, and serve all three. So, welcome. Now, get to work. Okay. Actually, I feel sorry. And now I've done my report, it's Mr. Bruce.
Actually, I'm gonna interrupt for just a moment because there's two people in the back who didn't get a chance to say hello. Gabe and Sonny, you guys wanna come up here for a second? These two boys are members of Hampton Bays 2483 Boy Scouts, Gabe Close and Sonny Peter Scalpel. They're here tonight as part of scouting, because they have to work on a citizenship and a community merit badge, and that merit badge teaches them about how local government functions, how local government has meetings and does things and so on. But they're here for that tonight. They were supposed to do a pledge of allegiance, but they were on time, they were a few minutes late, so it didn't work out quite right. So, I just wanted to introduce all of them.
Okay, from my report, today we received, literally today, we received notification that we're approved for Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP, which means all three schools were approved as such. All students in Hampton Bay schools beginning September, they receive the basic, breakfast, lunch, and snack meals each day for F R E E, my favorite word, free. If students want additional meals or snacks, what we call cart items, they would have to pay for those items separately. CEP is paid for 100% by federal state government. No local taxes were used to support CEP. So, kids will get free meals, and we don't have to pay for it. I love that. Summer food service. We are pleased to share that the district ran our own summer food service program this summer. Two of our students and one of our adult staff members ran a whole program each day at the middle school. On August 3rd, we served 186 meals. It is the highest one-day summer total in meals we have ever served, and we feel we really did, served our students well. We also feel our students working for the school, learning, grew, learned and grew. One student who has worked for us for five summers, was challenged to get her Food Service Manager's Certificate from the Department of Health. She studied and passed the test, and then she was really tested when the health inspector showed up, and she was the only one in the kitchen. She did very well. Once again, she passed, there were no violations, so she did a great job. Our other student working during the summer comes from our life skills program, worked very well with us, did a great job, and part of life skills is teaching students the skills needed to get jobs and move on in the community. In this case, it worked very well. The student has now been offered a job working for our cafeteria service. So, he's excited, they're excited, and one little thing led to something better, so it's great for him. We're very happy with sort of the unforeseen benefits of doing summer school lunch ourselves this year. In terms of our construction projects, we started the year this summer thinking we're gonna have somewhere between seven and 10 projects running. There's actually 14 running. Seven of those are done or will be done before school starts. A couple are going to be early September, the new gym, front gym floor here at the high school. The contractor will tell us we'll have it by Labor Day. I'm telling you, it's probably gonna be the week after Labor Day. It's just dry time. He's not gonna be able to get it painted and finished and dry quickly, my opinion. Baseball turf and softball turf, again, probably early September. Issue there is that the turf guys are also doing turf football fields, and football starts now, baseball and softball will start this spring, so their priorities should be. The library court guard redo will be done tomorrow. I'm joking. It's in process. I would say, you know, mid-September-ish probably is what we're looking at. They're doing well, but they got hit with those days of heavy rain, and it really slowed them down by a bit. HVAC in the eight classrooms here in the high school, early, early fall. I would say sometime in the month, month of September. Parts is our issue. Couldn't get electrical parts, so that stalls. The U.S. Skills Bathroom at the elementary school will be done before school starts. HVAC there is also fall, and again, is a part problem. The outdoor classroom at the elementary school, that we knew was gonna be late fall, maybe just because it'll need time on some of the things that happen to water. Skidmore Field, the drainage repair is done, and we got it teed it, so hopefully we get some of the right weather to get that growing quickly. And greenhouse at the middle school, probably late fall. They are gonna start pouring the footings and the foundation for that, but just, we didn't get it started fast enough, so that will be late fall. And then the last thing I have to just mention to the board, while we continue to strengthen our cybersecurity through the technology that we use, and the board was getting introduced to Duo and to dual authentication and so on, we're also looking into cybersecurity insurance. It's another part of our insurance program. It's not terribly expensive, it's about $85 a year. It's not terribly expensive, it's about eighty-five hundred dollars a year, but it provides coverage should our efforts to keep the hackers out fail us. There's insurance to help cover us just in case. So, looking into it, haven't stepped into that yet, but probably something that will be stepping into in the near future. Any questions?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. For the extra snacks, can the students use MySchool Bus or they may use cash?
No, they will be able to put money on MySchool Bus and use interest like debit card like they've been doing all along, yes.
Okay.
Obviously, we said some heavy rains. The Skidmore field held up, I'm hearing. From what I have heard and seen physically myself, even with the heavy rains, the drainage worked, and the field was usable within a day. Yeah. And what did you say, the cybersecurity insurance is? About eighty-five hundred a year. Okay. Thank you, Larry. All right, we will continue on. We're going to do a consent agenda from four A to four H. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Student Services is on its own, five A, we need motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Six will do consent agenda from six A to six K. I am recusing myself from six G. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Board of Education will do a consent agenda from seven A to seven C. I need a motion, please. Need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing. Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to open the seven D, the public hearing, for any public comments. And I don't see anybody here, and I'm assuming nobody online or anything. Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing, and I will need a motion for seven D.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will do seven E, exceptions of school safety plan. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will do public comment. Persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The board president will recognize all speakers. Time limits may be imposed based upon your needs. We have no one here, so with that being said, I will do a motion to adjourn the meeting. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Congratulations to all our new staff, faculty, and everybody have a new year. We'll see you in September.